This is Tom Taylor.
And Bob Peterson. And they are the two candidates for position number two. I'm just checking. And I want to thank the audience for attending. I would hope that you would be on your best behavior. We are treating these people as our guests. And the fact that they have decided to become a council member is a big deal. And so this is your opportunity to see how they react to the questions that we have. After we are done with the questions, you're welcome to do a meet and greet afterwards. But we are on TV. We are live. And best behavior, please. I want to say first and foremost that this is not an endorsement of either candidate. We are here for you to meet the candidates. I need to thank North Beach TV, Daryl Prowse, John Reed, Scott Johnston. We have Janet Artimer, Jane who is everywhere. We have our friend over here, Rick Beveridge, that is doing the audio. And there's a lot of time and energy into this and a lot of volunteer time. I want to also thank Lynn Budefeld for her previous contributions. And I think what we'll do is, the guy with the coin didn't bring me the coin again. So that'll come in just a minute. What we're going to do is we're going to start off with introductions for each of the candidates. And then we'll take turns, every other one, to answer questions. And the both candidates will answer the same question. And again, this is not a, thank you very much. This is not an endorsement of either candidate. And it is not, this is not a PAC. We are receiving no funding for this. This should be on North Beach TV as well as YouTube. So let's see if I can keep this coin within my hands, which I've been worried about this for months. It's tails. So who's going to do it? You need to, you need to.
Bob, go. So we didn't have to call it?
You have to call it.
Oh, my God, okay.
This is, go.
Tails.
Okay.
All right.
It is tails.
Again. I'm lucky with that stuff. Well, good evening. I thank you guys for coming out. I'm Bob Peterson. And I'm going to read, and I don't like doing this, a canned statement because I've had to write it like five times now for the various places that ask for stuff, okay? So this is just going to be a recap of my time on the council and what I've been doing since I've been here in Ocean Shores. First of all, I'd like to say that I want to see Ocean Shores continue to build on the foundation that we began in 2016 when I became on city council. During that term, I worked with current mayor and then councilwoman Lisa Grebel on reworking the nuisance ordinances. I also led an ad hoc team that rewrote the council guidelines for meetings and ethics. As a council, we created financial principles that outlined a path forward fiscally to ensure we could meet our financial obligations, pay down debt, and put money into the reserve During this time also, we were able to bring the library back into the city budget rather than depending upon levies. This has been a large bonus for the community as it continues to reach every element of our populace with a variety of services. Another program I'm very proud of was the Summer Fund Program that was formed as a STEM experience for the kids of our community, which included Cabela's Beach and Pacific Beach. It provided the kids a chance to socialize in a safe place and to see many educational and recreational venues. I was elected again in 2020. I was able to serve close to three years of that term, but it was cut short due to a health issue with my family that needed more time from me. I felt as though I could not meet all the obligations required of me as a city council member and a psychologist, so I stepped away from both. However, before I left, I was able to gain support from the mayor and city council for a school-based health center to provide health services to the kids in our community and guidance for parents seeking out specialized treatments. At the request of administration, I wrote a letter to Patty Murray, who was overseeing the program funding on a national level, requesting North Beach School District to be considered as a recipient of the grant funding. As a result of this effort and many others, we will have this clinic opening for the school year. It will be located at a high school and will have a doctor on site two days a week. In closing, I would like your consideration when it comes time to vote on October 20th. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Taylor. I am running for position two. I don't have the credentials he has, but I do have 22 years as a deputy sheriff and detective with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Office as an investigator. I have, what, nine years with Hope and Police Department as their animal control code, park enforcement, and doing polygraphs, both criminal and pre-employment for them. So I've talked to a lot of people. I interact with a lot of people. My reason for running for this position is to get the citizens back into it, give them the voice, give them the ability to tell us what they want us to do, not us tell them what we want to do. So my background in law enforcement allows me to look at our department and see if we can improve it with either accreditation to hold them a little bit more responsible for everything they do, from paperwork to training to how they work the streets. And living here since 2004, I've seen a lot of things. I had a question, everything from not stopping people doing 35 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. So my job is to listen to you guys at every step. And I'm here for you. I'm not here for me. I'm here for you. That's why I'm running for this position. I have a background that goes far and wide in that area. And everything else I can learn pretty fast. So ask me the questions. Let's do this.
Okay.
Do we flip again?
No, we don't have to. You get to start, Bob. Thank you. This is nothing up my sleeve. The South Fire Station renovation. Renovating the South Fire Station was budgeted in 2021, 2022 by ANIM budget to cost $420,000, equally split between the fire department budget and the emergency care budget. The most recent estimate is nearly double the amount. Is the South Fire Station a priority for you? And if so, how will it be paid for?
Well, it is a priority for me because actually about 200 feet behind my house is where the line starts where they can't get their house fire coverage. It's Spinnaker. And the dues go up there, the homeowner's dues go up quite a bit there. And everybody heard about the fire the other night, right? That was about 500 feet from my house. And I saw what it did. I know it's going to be important to come up with the money for that fire station, but we're really increasing in population down in the south end. And we need protection, just like the primary safety concerns of our city are the police department and the fire department. And we need to make sure that they've got the tools they need. Right now, I think we're just a little bit short in each area. And I'd like to see that thing opened. But I do believe that it's going to cost more than our original estimate, so to speak, because it's been sitting there a long time. It's going to have to be for both sexes, which is going to consider locker room space and changing space and that sort of thing like that. So I think it's going to be a big task, but I think we need to do it as we grow.
Thank you. Tom, South Fire Station renovation. Renovating the South Fire Station was budgeted in 2021, 2022 by ANIM budget to cost $420,000, equally split between the fire department budget and the emergency care budget. The most recent estimate is nearly double the amount. Is the South Fire Station a priority for you? And if so, how will it be paid for?
Any project that's important for safety of our citizens, be it fire, police, is important to me. One is looking at the budget or what the prices that they're looking at. Get somebody out there and actually break it down. Do we need to do certain things to it? Do we need to add a building? We can add living space. You can do trailer. They're safe. They're easy to put up. And a lot of departments do have trailers for their firemen, small ones do. We can look at that. So there's not just one thing we have to look at, but we can look at a few things to make it within the budget or closer to a feasible budget. And I would look at those things first.
Okay.
And the money can come from grants or a lot of things like that from the state and other agencies.
Thank you. I need to introduce Janet. Janet is starting off with three minutes. She has a two-minute card, a one-minute card, 30 seconds, and 15 seconds. And then your mic gets shut off. So this time, Tom, it's your turn. And my husband still hasn't been fishing. What can be done or offered to entice new businesses to open in Ocean Shores?
Since I own a business, one is having them come out and look at our city, see what we have to offer, look at the businesses that are successful in our city. You can recruit people just like you can recruit officers to come to the police station. Businesses are no different. They want a place that they can make money, make a living. And that's putting our businesses out there. Because when you're a business owner, you know other business owners, and not just in our city, but all over. So they're our best speaker for getting new businesses there.
Thank you. Bob, what can be done or offered to entice new businesses to open in Ocean Shores?
Well, certainly, we need to become more attractive downtown. I think we've let that age, and it's not accessible to a lot of people that are in town and come from out of town. If you sit and look at, you know, the new hot dog place, there's a friend of mine, I sat on the back of a truck the other day and watched it across the street. And that's sort of the side of chance. And the people walking up and down there, they weren't turning the corner, going down towards past McDonald's and to the businesses down there because they can't park and it's not attractive. The businesses are many of the same kind of business. We need to consider sidewalks down there. We need to consider actually opening up some more space for business in this town. And it could be over there on, across from the dunes in that area. And/or it could be across the street, behind IGA and down towards the fire station on that canal side. I think it would be nice if we had more professional businesses in there.
Okay, thank you. I believe, but it's your turn again. Thank you. Engineered outdoor structures. Controversy over the use of the engineered non-brick-and-mortar structures has surfaced as a result of the city wanting Ocean Pores to remove the only such structure in town, even though it sufficiently met building fire, water, and storm codes to receive a permit. The city council needs to reopen this issue to work towards changes to municipal code to permit engineered structures if all federal, state, business zone codes are met. What would you do to facilitate that?
Well, about three years ago, we had an ad hoc committee on that. And we presented it to the council. And three of us went down and we met down in Ocean Pores and we met another time, I believe. And I had managed to pull all of the requests for permits from the time they came to the city and for every step of the way. And an interesting thing on there is that they kept complying with requests for they had to do this or had to do that. The tent was, it's no big deal. It'll stand up to winds, you know, that we have around here, not a big deal at all. But the problem is, is they were given a list of codes, a list of things that they need to do to pull up the code, right before we went into COVID. And they were saved, so to speak, by the emergency declaration. And so they've been under that declaration since then. And now, if the mayor and the city council would lift that moratorium, they would have to either come up to code or, I don't know, close the tent? I don't know. I don't think they have to tear it down. I just don't think they can have people in it. It is safety, purely safety. And that's what they've, they have not fulfilled those commitments. And it's all right there in black and white. So I know that there's a feeling that the mayor wants them to tear the place down. And that's just not so. It's a falsehood. It's a false premise. If they would come to code, and they've had, they've had two additional years to do it, in fact. So that's actually was a result of the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Tom, the engineered outdoor structure. Controversy over the use of the engineered non-brick-and-mortar structures has surfaced as a result of the city wanting Ocean Pores to remove the only such structure, easy for me to say, in town, even though it sufficiently met building fire, water, and storm codes to receive a permit. The city council needs to reopen this issue and work towards changes to the municipal code to permit engineered structures if all federal, state, business, and zone codes are met. And how would you facilitate that?
From what I understand is that it met all the requirements the city gave it, as stated. And it responded to all the upgrades in codes, be it removing electrical cords going in. And if it met the codes, it should be allowed. We let manufactured covers for boats and cars and motorhomes that are made of metal that go into the ground. This thing goes at 100, well, stands 137 mile an hour winds, more wind than we get usually here. So if it meets the codes and it's structurally sound, I would say permit it. That's my personal feeling. I've been in it. I've seen it. I've looked at it. It's solid. If it met the codes, even before COVID or during COVID, it should be meeting codes now.
Thank you. Your turn. Thank you. I heard the only doctor at C-MAR is retiring soon, and they have no plans to replace him. Should our city government get involved in helping to bring health care to its Ocean Shores taxpayers, residents, and voters? What would you recommend we do?
If we can't find an organization that can come out and service us as a city because we're losing one, we need to one research where we can technically find one that one might come in. We can look at alternatives, find a doctor, a person who just graduated from medical school, got through his years of internship, and see if they would like to come this way and be our doctor. England does it in a lot of respects. We just started, we need to start thinking outside the box. Thinking too narrow-minded, I think. We need to start thinking a little bit wider.
It's not me.
No, no, I'm just saying. Well, because you're asking, it's automatically, I look at the person who's talking to me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's my, all my years as a cop, so I'm sorry. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Bob, I heard the only doctor at C-MAR is retiring soon, and they have no plans to replace him. Should our city government get involved in helping to bring health care to its Ocean Shores taxpayers, residents, and voters? What would you recommend we do?
Well, I think that I saw a suggestion today or yesterday that we need to get more involved with the hospital and talking to the people over there and try to get representation on that board. We pay them close to $2 million a year. And I would think that we would want to work with them, perhaps to get a satellite out here, perhaps even with Tohola, to move something in between, to pool our resources, so to speak. The idea of bringing a doctor in, hey, that's great. But think what it costs to put that office together, the machines you need, the expense of all that. I don't see any doctor doing that unless it's Dr. Kildare or something. But I don't see that happening. I don't know that an urgent care is anymore, is better than what we have now, because I think once you step into an ambulance here, that you're in an emergency room. A lot of places, they don't have that, and you're in pretty good care at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing to that, just for my, for the citizens to know?
Yes.
Only because we're talking about medical for our city. There's a ton of times that when this hospital in Aberdeen is on diversion, and it's more on diversion than not. Since I work with the police department, I hear that all the time, they're on diversion. And that's not good for our citizens even here. So we need to do something for our citizens in this city that may prevent them from having to go there in the first place.
Thank you. Bob, do you have any comment?
I just think that if, again, if we could pool with the hospital and pool with the tribe and pool with us, that we could put something, maybe put something out here. I think that's the quickest way.
Excuse me, I've got a tickle in my throat. I believe that it's Bob's turn, if I am correct.
You're right.
If I'm not, we're just going, go right ahead and run with it. When we retired here, we had thought we would be leaving behind the negativity surrounding politics these days. Excuse me. But it is just as bad in Ocean Shores. Do you have any ideas to try to bring back civility back to city politics?
Who's going to answer that one? Me or him?
You picked, you get to answer first.
All right, lucky me. Yeah, I agree that it is highly uncivil. But it's highly uncivil everywhere, I think, now at this point in time. And I think social media has a lot to do with that. Just look at our national situation, look at our state situation, look at here. There's a lot of animosity. Besides, we're pretty divided. And I think until we can do something about acting civil towards one another and try to actually work out problems instead of my way is the right way and you're crazy, that sort of thing, if we can stop that, we might have a shot. But it takes time. And it takes a lot of people to get on board with that. And I'm hoping in my lifetime that that'll happen, but you never know.
Thank you.
Testing.
Thank you very much. Okay, Tom, it's your turn. When we retired here, we had thought we would be leaving behind the negativity surrounding politics these days. But it is just as bad in Ocean Shores. Do you have any ideas to try to bring back civility back to city politics?
The only ones that can bring back civility and basically lack of politics. We want to get rid of the political views on it and start talking like citizens and friends and neighbors. That's what we need to do. We all want different things in some respects, but what's the best way of going at right now, right then, instead of dividing a city based off of politics? Our government's doing it, like you said. The government's doing it. It's, this is the first time I've gotten into the politics in this, in my life, really. Signs being stolen, destroyed, both parties being destroyed, why? There's sign, not the individual, but that's part of it. We're, if people see it, we don't tell people to stop it. If we're not doing it, that's great, but we need to talk. We can talk. We can have differences, but talk. We need to interact with each other on a level base. That's the only way we can get rid of it. Am I not talking? Okay. That better? Okay.
Are you?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Your turn.
No, I don't like this, this close.
It's difficult to get used to having a mic to speak into. And I'm grateful that we have good mics and an operator over there that is willing to let us use them. We would like to see our city government resume the monthly chat with the council meetings. We thought they were a good opportunity to have the city hear from the taxpayers and are disappointed that they were discontinued. Would you support resuming these meetings and why? That's for you.
That's for me. Yes, why not resume them? They're good. People get there and interact. You want the people here. You want more citizens than we have in our average council meeting. You want to know what they want. So start them back again.
Thank you.
I got it. I got the question.
I don't want anybody to say it was not fair. We would like to see our city government resume the monthly chat with the council meetings. We thought they were a good opportunity to have the city hear from the taxpayers and are disappointed that they were discontinued. Would you support resuming these meetings and why?
Well, I think that was a decision by the mayor to do the city chats, and I think that was with a designated topic to start it off. Am I correct? I believe I am. What we did do before this last election was we had council chats, and what the format was different there. We would have three council members meet in the convention center in a small room. And we would, when the time would hit 5 o'clock, we'd say, okay, what do you want to talk about? And people would start talking about what they wanted to talk about. We had no agenda, anything. And actually, it led to great crosstalk, like people from this side would be talking to people over there, et cetera. And it worked pretty well. I thought it was a good format. And I would certainly like to do that again.
Okay, thank you. It's your turn, Bob.
Oh, okay. There's so many.
Well, it depends on how long the questions last, is how quick you answer them.
We've been doing this.
You have.
All right.
This is for you to begin with.
Okay.
Condition of city streets. Ocean Shores property owners were assessed over $30 million to completely rebuild Ocean Shores property owners were assessed over 30 million to completely rebuild all roads in the city through 2007 Local Improvement District, or LID. Many are still paying off their assessments. It's now 15 years later and many citizens are concerned about the condition of our roads in terms of scalloping, broken edges, sinking caused by subgrade problems, and sinking of the roadway at a prior, at prior repair locations. Do you think that the city is adequately maintaining our roads? What additional resources would you suggest to maintain them?
Well, the, the lid that was paid back in, I forget what year it was. When that was assessed, and they got the money, they were supposed to create a line item to put money into a reserve each year to go towards the maintaining of those streets. There was never anything put in there until, I think it was 2016, 2017, when we, we had an excess and we fought to put $100,000 in, as seed money into that account. Also, at the same time, those of you who remember John Lynn, John Lynn and John Martin and I worked on a transportation benefit district, which put together a small, a small portion of sales tax that would go towards that fund, designated for that fund. It would go to the state, then go to the county and come back to us. And it was designed to give us about $250,000 extra a year. So, we had 110 to start, then we got the 250 rolling in every year. So, we started a plan. What was going to be, what was going to be done? How are we going to go about this? And when Nick Bird was here, he put together a plan and laid it out, and then he left. And so, I don't think that plan had been followed until just recently this year. I know our new project manager has started on it. And you see striping, but some things are getting out of, out of control again. I, one, one place I know is that Ocean Shores Boulevard is starting to get the up and down again, all the way around. And so, that's going to be a major thing. And that's actually part of our, actually a part of our major function as a council is to maintain infrastructure. So, I think that that's on, on the councils from the time those roads were fixed until this day. And I think that at this point in time, there's some work going on, but that needs to be carried on. Otherwise, it's going to be another lid down the road and nobody wants that.
Thank you. Tom, condition of city streets. Ocean Shores property owners were assessed over 30 million to completely rebuild all the roads in the city through 2007, through the 2007 Local Improvement District, or LID bonds. Many are still paying off those, their assessments. It's now 15 years later and many citizens are concerned about the condition of the roads in terms of scalloping, broken edges, sinking caused by subgrade problems, and sinking of the roadway at prior repair locations. Do you think the city is adequately maintaining our roads? What additional resources would you suggest to maintain them?
I like Bob's talk, though. That was pretty good.
Thank you. I rehearsed it.
The, I was here when they did the roads and it didn't take long for them to start showing that. What's underneath those roads were, should have been maybe pulled out, solid material put underneath it instead of leaving some rotting logs. But at the same time, we do need to keep them up and we need to find the funds. If the, they set a plan in place but didn't keep it going, then those people that were on the council at that time and could make those decisions should have continued to try to put anything they could into it. And, but now, we can start looking at grants, other forms from the state. We get people to come here, we can, we can get grants. We just have to write them right and get them right. Olympia has money to give, like I said before. So, that's what we need to do. We need to go after where the money is. They like to give it away. So, my answer.
Thank you. It's your turn.
That one's been used before.
Just a little. Funding for the library appears to be a popular topic this election cycle, so let's clear the air by starting off with this question. Please state your position on funding for the library. Yes or no, do you support funding for a source other than the city's general fund? And if you want to say anything beyond yes or no, please add your comments.
I believe that the library should be funded. Because the purpose of the library is for our citizens and our children to go and use it. It should be funded. If the city has funds to do it, I believe we should help in that funding, period, because it serves our children, our neighbors. One thing I'd like to see not done in city-funded locations is politics. They shouldn't be political. And once you make a city-funded location, they get to be political, you've lost that difference for the people to go and know it's safe to be there without being attacked by somebody. So, that's my view.
Thank you. Bob, funding for the library appears to be a popular topic this election cycle, so let's clear the air by starting off with this question. Please state your position on the funding for the library. Yes or no, do you support funding from a source other than the city's general fund? If you want to say anything beyond yes or no, please add your comments.
Well, I was the one that made the motion and to get it into the city, funded by the city. And I also was the head on the two library levies right before that, the two-year levies, to get money to, or get votes to pass the levy. So, we got it into it. It is a, it's the center of our city, basically. It, it handles all ages. Particularly when you know, if you don't know this, that in our school libraries, we don't have libraries. And actually, there's an outreach program by the library that reaches out to the junior high, high school once a week to, where they can access books, materials, that sort of thing like that. But I'm a strong advocate for a library and I, I will do everything I can, whether I'm elected or not elected, to keep it into the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's your turn.
I keep going to the same place.
The new police station. What priority do you place on the construction of a new police station, which failed at the ballot box last November, to receive necessary support? If it's a priority for you, what steps will you take as a mayor or council member to move this project forward? Please address the following. How do you plan to achieve the popular support from the taxpayers for this project? So, we'll get started with those two.
Well, I'm a strong advocate for the police station. I voted for it every opportunity I've had on council land as a citizen. We need it. We're, the initial problem was where were we going to put it? Were we going to raise the old police station? Or were we going to try to put it over there by, between ACE and the post office? And that turned out not to be for sale. We actually do own land across from the Polynesian that we, we own it. And it might be a good place to put it. So, I think we need it. And as far as raising the money for it, every time we don't do something on a building, I think we maybe have learned this from the Public Works Building, that every time we don't do something, the cost rises exponentially. Again, I, I support it and I always will, until we get it.
Okay. And Tom?
Yes.
We'll start with these two portions of it. New police station, what priority do you place on the construction of a new police station, which failed at the ballot box last November, to receive necessary support? If it's a priority for you, what steps will you take as mayor or council to move this project forward? Please address the following. How do you plan to achieve the popular support from the taxpayers for this project?
So, police station is necessary. What they're in right now is extremely small. It's not comfortable to even sit in there most times. I've done some polygraphs in there in the past. They don't have the room. They need a new place. I think out of, out of the box and they may not need one built. There might be something out there that's already structural, already prepared for modifications. ACE building is, most of it's available. We can lease it for a while until we find a perfect place for it and the cost to build it. We can actually do a lot with something that's already there. And, but we need something for them. They've been in that building ever since I've been here. And it's, it's cramped. Nobody wants to be there. It's just, it's, it needs to be redone. So, I believe that we need to do something as soon as we can for them. I think morale would go up for the officers, too, if we did something like that. Get them into someplace that's comfortable. And that's where I, I want to help out on that part, looking for something we can get them into with the lowest cost to us for now. And then later, when our budget's better, we can look at building. A lot of places have gone into existing buildings, so we can do that, too.
Okay, there's a few more parts to this. They're wanting to know if, if there were any design changes, how would you suggest that? And how do you plan to finance it?
Well, the designs, I think, were fine. You know, they, they, they looked at it, they had a couple of options, had a couple spots for it. As far as getting the money for it, some is going to have to be grant money, obviously. It's going to have to be some tax dollars. It's going to have to be a combination of everything we get our hands on.
Okay. And Tom, thank you. Tom, any design changes, if any, would you suggest? And how do you plan to finance it?
Design changes, I haven't seen the original. I wasn't around to see that, so, but it'd be nice to look at. Outside of that, we can, financing is the same thing. We get grant money, especially for law enforcement. Olympia would love to give us some money for law enforcement, so we just have to ask. We have to write it, we have to get it. Not knowing the plans, I've, I've been in quite a few buildings that were made by what multimillion dollar plans to a Costco storefront that holds Kirkland PD's department with inside shooting range and more than enough people to have 60 some odd prisoners in it. So, and they saved a lot of money going in that place. And all they did was build some rooms and everything else in it, jails, but it was, it cost them, but it was existing. Didn't have to build it again. We can do the same here.
And gentlemen, would you put it on the ballot again?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's your turn. Thank you. Do you believe it is the betterment of the community to run candidates as a voting block? Please explain.
First time I'm running. I, I'm not sure what's going to be best for that. This works out, we can keep it this way. I think it's good. I think going, talking with the person that you're running against is perfect. Citizens have to vote, no matter what type you do. So, that's, that's what it is. You guys vote, no matter if we're a block, whatever. So.
Okay, thank you. Bob, do you believe it is the betterment of the community to run candidates as a voting block? Please explain.
Well, I think that, we're talking about the signs being put together, that sort of thing like that. I, I guess that's the genesis of the question. Everybody can see those signs and everybody can see who's running. And if they do any research at all, if they go to any of the forums or read any of the newspapers or any of the Facebook, you know who's running and you all have some, hopefully have some connection with somebody. And you say, oh yeah, I like that person. I think that person's got a good idea. Oh, I hate, I hate that person. They don't do anything for me. They just happen to be in a row. That's all it is, guys. That's all it is. As a matter of fact, if you look at a lot of them, I put them out there, you know, for our, for the side of like John and Lisa and myself. Oh, we put them out and, you know, to put that stuff out takes a lot of time, but we would just put them in. Sometimes we put them in between the other, like say, Tom's or PJ's. If there was space, if you look at those places, those ideal spots are not everywhere. So, yeah, we pick spots, too, just like they did. So, you know, it's the pounding of the signs.
Okay, thank you. Your turn. When we moved here from California a few years ago, we were surprised to find we still have to purchase bottled water. Can our drinking, cooking, water supply be made so we can actually drink and cook with our tap water? I won't give the tap water to our animals. That's, that's for you.
Personally, in our house, we have, our water's fine. I drink it out of the tap. That might be why I'm a little crazy, but it, it's fine and it's never been discolored. But I do understand in some areas, I've listened to the dialogue about, about flushing versus non-flushing, chlorine versus non-chlorine and that sort of thing. Everybody deserves fresh water, clean water. And I hope we, I hope we get there pretty soon.
Thank you. Tom, when we moved here from California a few years ago, we were surprised to find we still have, have to purchase bottled water. Can our drinking, cooking, water supply be made so that we can actually drink and cook with our tap water? I won't give the tap water to our animals.
Yeah, I hate it, too. I hate giving it to my dogs, but I have, I've been buying bottled water for a long time since I've lived here. And I'm from California, too, so I understand what they're talking about. We need to make our system better for the people. That what we drink from that tap should be good enough for us to do and our dogs to do without smelling chlorine in it or discoloration. And I've smelled it first time, pull it up, start to drink it and I can smell the chlorine in it. I don't like that either. So, I went out and bought a filtration system because I like coffee in the morning. So, that's what I use now, not the water out the faucet first. We need to clean it up. We need to redo our system. We shouldn't have that in any of our pipes to any of the homes, anything else. So, we need to clean it up. And it's going to cost some money. It will cost money and we'll have to find that money, but we need to do it.
Thank you. Why can't I camp on my lot more than 90 days? How do you feel about extending the limit? I feel persecuted.
I believe if you're a lot owner and you pay your taxes on that lot, and if you do any improvements on it, water, whatever, electricity, your taxes are going to be a little bit higher. You pay that, those taxes, you come in and stay the time. You're not solely bringing everything with you, you're going to be spending money in the city. You're going to be going to the stores, you're going to be going out to eat. You're going to be going to the stores, you're going to be going out to eat. You're going to be doing all that. And I think they have a right. They, I think they have a right to extend it a little bit more. As long as it's, it's within the codes, let's extend it some. That's the way I feel about it. I've got a lot on one side, for years I had a lot on one side. Now they built, so. Yeah, my answer. They can spend more time.
Thank you. Bob, why can't I camp on my lot more than ninety days? How do you feel about extending that time limit? I feel persecuted.
I'm sorry they feel persecuted. I think if there's the proper improvements, I would enter into a discussion for expansion of those days. I talk about a hundred and twenty, but I think they need to have the proper water and sewage and electricity.
Okay. Thank you. And it's your turn. Thank you. I feel like this creel is ready for Halloween. Ah, let's see. This goes back to the city chat and it does seem like it's a redundant, but, but they're asking about the format. That the format was actually the three on council members or the, or the mayor, rather than having it be a specific project or presentation that they'd like to go back to that. And again, your, your comment would be?
My comment would be, I, I loved our council chats. I loved it. The interaction was great. The discussions were great. People got to know one another, get to cross-talk. It was great. I liked it.
Okay. And Tom, again, the city chats.
Bring him back. Bring him back. We, if he done it once, let's do it again. People like to give their suggestions to the state council. Well, it's why we have them.
Thank you. Well, this is going really fast. You just talked about this, water concerns. Some citizens have concerns regarding the city's water quality and a study session was recently held and several items were identified. In your opinion, are the identified action items sufficient or are additional actions justified? And how would you propose resolving citizen, citizen concerns from this point?
I think we need to go further. I think we need to test for more things in the water. Some things they don't test for. Everything that's in that water, we're drinking and I think we need to make it better than what we have. Whatever it's going to take. That's, we just have, we have to get to it and start working on it now. Longer we leave it the way it is, it's going to cost more. So, that's my answer to the question about the water period.
Okay, thank you. Bob, water concerns and they're, in your opinion, or let's see, when citizens have concerns regarding the city's water quality, a study session was recently held and several action items were identified. In your opinion, are the identified action items sufficient or are additional actions justified? And how would you propose resolving the citizen concerns from this point?
Well, I was at that presentation and one of the things they talked about was the, in the areas that were, people were concerned about that the water was okay from the pipes to the meter, the outside meter. But from the meter into coming out of the faucet, there was issues. So, I'm not sure how you rectify that. I think that's something we obviously need to get to the bottom of as a city. Can't have that happening. If it's, if it's something about maintenance of inside the pipes in your house, I don't know, I've never heard of that, but yeah, we need to get it fixed and we need to understand exactly what it is. So, people are safe.
Do you believe ethics complaints against city council members or the mayor should be held in public or behind closed doors as currently happens here? If so, why? And what would you say about reconfiguring the ethics complaint review with a, with a committee comprised of citizens and electives?
Okay, you always have a choice if there's an ethics complaint against you, whether to have it dealt with at an executive session or do it in public. The last couple that have been done have been done in public. And that's fine, whatever, whatever you want to do. As far as the people who should be policing it is I think the council does a good job of policing. They have to look into it. I think they're, they're fair, what I've seen at least. And I think that's the way to say. I think if it were, there's so much that goes into these decisions that people make, that you have to, it would be almost unimaginable to try to give a group of people all the information they would need to make the decision, if you know what I'm saying. So, I think it needs to be decided within the council.
Okay, thank you. Tom, do you believe ethics complaints against city council members or the mayor should be held in public or behind closed doors as currently happens here? Why? What would you say about reconfiguring on ethics complaint review committee with comprised of citizens and electives?
I've thought about this since I've seen a couple incidents that occur already. I believe that we should have a selected citizens of this, of the city with backgrounds in investigation, retired police officers, firemen, investigators of some type and let them look at their original complaint, weed it out, talk to the people involved and then come back with a recommendation. And at that point, the council members, if it want, if that's how it goes, can make a decision on what happens. But I believe that we have citizens in this, this community that can help us out with this, without us as council people being at that first level. Because they're one of our peers when we're doing it. So, I have no problem with the citizens coming in, being on a committee for it.
Thank you. Could you turn your phones off, please?
Music literally.
How do you feel about the number of Airbnbs in Ocean Shores, which appears to be over three hundred units? Do they pay into the LTAC fund and should they? And is that something you believe should be monitored and verified with LTAC contributors in public?
It's kind of, kind of a hard question. But at the same time, if they're being a temporary housing, almost like a hotel for a couple nights, a week, I think they should pay into it. They're running it as a temporary guest house, whatever it is. I think they should, they should pay into it, just like the hotels do.
Okay, thank you. Bob, how do you feel about the number of Airbnbs in Ocean Shores, which appears to be over three hundred units? Do they pay into the LTAC fund and should they? And is that something you believe should be monitored and verified with LTAC contributors in public?
Well, I think Airbnbs, I think there's probably more than that in town. I do think that if they're not, I know we get a check each month from the, the various companies that do Airbnbs. It's a silent thing. It doesn't, it's not talked about very much, but we do get money for it. That goes to the city coffers. I don't think it's LTAC, but I might be wrong there. I think that, I think the Airbnbs, what, if you think about it a second and you do some research into other cities that have been inundated with Airbnbs, that what it does, it does, it takes away potential rental housing from the market and it takes people who actually live in the town, who want to maybe rent a place, it puts them way out of, out of the market. I'm thinking of places like, there's a town in Arizona that it just ruined the town. Everybody decide they're do Airbnb, Airbnb. For instance, I have a house payment on my house that's reasonable. If I were to do an Airbnb with it, I could make several thousand a month on it. It doesn't help the people that were trying to get into a place to live that are working for minimum wage here and have them a place to stay. It takes, it just takes it off the market.
You mean the end is coming?
Maybe, I don't know.
Oya Hut Ditch. The current city plan is to clean it up and then maintain it every two years. But the cost for the work being done to clean the ditch comes from one-time federal grant money or ARPA money. This revenue source is not available once the current grant is spent. How will you pay for this maintenance?
Okay. Initially, when we, when the Oya Hut Ditch became such a huge issue was when we had that flooding a year or two ago. And it, all of a sudden, the county, the city and washed out, got into a configuration where they decided, yeah, they needed to clear that, part of that ditch so they could start moving water out of Oya Hut and bring it down this way. It is, to me, it's the headwaters for our freshwaterways. So, we've got to get that thing cleaned and it's not going as fast as I thought it was, it was going to go. And we're having some issues, I guess, now with businesses, asking businesses to pay for part of it. But in the end, I think the city will have to pay for it. But when we get that done, I think is it is a situation where we really can start cleaning up the freshwaterways. I think until that's not done, until that's done, then we're going to continue to have pollution roll into the freshwaterways. And people that are on that ditch from one fifteen down to, down around the Shell Station, it's still going to be flooding down there. So, it's a roundabout answer.
Okay, thank you. Tom, Oya Hut Ditch. The current city plan is to clean it up and then maintain it every two years. But the cost for the work being done now to clean the ditch comes from one-time federal grant, ARPA money. This revenue source is not available once the current grant is spent. How will you pay for this maintenance?
Okay, I'm going to jump out of the box here for a second.
Do I need to be afraid?
No, no. I heard this at city council, first thing I heard about paying for the cost of it and everything and after it, I had a question in my own head. How do we do our own ditches in the city? City workers, right? Why are we, why, why can't our city workers do what they do? We have the equipment, we have the workers. That's their job. If we need to hire a professional to guide them, we can do that cheaper than paying Rollins to go, go in there and tear it up and do what they do. It may not take as long, but after it's done by once, one time by them, even that, why can't our city workers do it? Keep it clear, keep it flowing. We pay them, we have them. Why not use them? They work for the city. So, that was my question out of the box, okay? So, if we're not going to do that, we'll have to find money. We're already paying them their salary, so why not use the city workers for it?
Not corner. The last person to speak.
Okay. All right. Good job, I'm sorry.
What throws me is if you both decide to speak more.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Should Ocean Shores code enforcement officers wear sidearms while on duty? Please explain.
Maybe I should stay out of that one. The job of code enforcement, animal control, which our city has, there has been incidents across the country where they have been assaulted either by owners of dogs, people who are upset about any code violation that they may be in. During COVID, there was a lot of heated discussions with people and there's a couple code enforcers back east that were shot and killed by citizens. So, the weapon on the side of a qualified code enforcement officer slash animal control in this city is the same as me in Hoekwam with the animal control code and parking enforcement officer. I wear a weapon. I was a police officer. I know how to use it, know when to use it. Your code enforcement officer should know both of those too. So, I don't have a problem with him carrying for that purpose. Displaying it any other way unless he's defending his own life, there's, there's the question. So, that is my answer for that.
Thank you.
I agree a hundred percent.
You're supposed to wait and let me read the question.
I'm telling you, I agree a hundred percent with what he said.
Okay. Thank you both for that explanation and that agreement. I am seeing many building lots stripped bare in violation of city code. Do you believe we should be enforcing our law and codes? What would you do to assure the taxpayers this is happening?
Well, it's been an ongoing problem now, hasn't it? I think the problem happens when the, the people that are clearing the lots, they just go in and do it. And they, then they try to get the permit later and they pay a fine or get fined or whatever. And that's going on for too long. I think that there ought to be more of a heads up for people coming in to get permits, that this is what you have to do, da, 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 da. And there ought to be a serious fine for the contractors who are doing that work unauthorized. That's where we ought to hit them, not at the buyer of the home, which is where all the costs go to now. We should get the person who does the work and we should find them and then we, maybe revoke their business license if they choose not to do it. It's part of the erosion that we have. We have two sets of erosions going on in this town. The first set is our coastline, obviously, all the way down and around the backside over to the bay. And we have erosion going on on the inside with the lots scraping, the things that flow into the freshwaterways. We have a very finite space here to put things. You know, we're what, two miles wide, about six miles long or so. All the other cities I've ever lived in, like Kansas City, for instance, and when I lived in Kirkland, they all had a room to. lived in Kirkland, they all had room to expand. You could keep moving to add more people. Here, you can't keep moving, you've gotta find an empty lot. And when they do the lot and they do it incorrectly, they just, they just scrape it down to the bottom, all of the, where does that water go? Where do those elements go? The dirt, the sand, where's it go? You know, do we, can we handle all that? I see our ditches are not the greatest in the world. So I think we're, we're under attack from both sides for the erosion side. I hope to answer it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, I'm seeing many building lots stripped bare in violation of city code. Do you believe we should be enforcing our law and codes? What would you do to assure the taxpayers this is happening?
I do believe that we should be enforcing them and we should be enforcing them with, when they come in to start doing any building on lots, they should be, have to go to the city hall, pull a permit for it, find out who the contractor is that's gonna come out and do the stripping of that lot. Make sure they don't go overboard if they, and make sure that they actually are licensed to do business in the city. And then at that point, if they do strip a lot completely, they get fined. They do it a second time, they don't get to come back in the city. I've seen too many lots stripped bare next door to me. When they came in, they wanted everything down to the lake. And that was a contractor that's been in this city a long time and he would have done it if we didn't call. So I believe we need to enforce it and we need to enforce it firmly on them. They're just doing a business, they don't care. I know the person who did it next door to me, he doesn't care as long as he gets paid. So I think we need to do a little bit more enforcing of it across the board.
Thank you.
We're almost at the bottom.
It keeps multiplying now. Should the city designate further funds to improve and maintain our freshwaterways? How would you propose to fund this if you said yes?
I wanna say yes. That's someone to say yes. I mean, we do need to clean them. I think there's avenues to, it's too close, I think. There's avenues that we can look into. One, we can look into what, finding out the best way of doing it first. And then we, like I said before, we have workers in the city that could start cleaning some of our waterways. We just have to have them guided in how to do it best. And we're already paying them. Why do we have to pay more to somebody outside unless it's a consultant to tell us where we need to start? So, and funding it, we're already paying them.
Bob, should the city designate further funds to improve and maintain our freshwaterways? And how would you propose to fund this if you said yes?
I think we do need to allocate as much as we can because I think we're getting to a point where maybe no return, I don't know yet. But there is a way to do it that I don't think is a very popular way. You can create a lake management district where you could, the people on the lake that have property touching any waterway could vote to join it or not, or not join it, it'd be a majority rules, and then they could tax themselves from one dollar a year to five hundred dollars a year, whatever they wanted to do. And that was proposed to them about five, six years ago. And of course, nobody wanted to do that. But I believe that if we did, we could do something like that and have a really low tax and tax everybody a few bucks. Because I think it's a city problem. It's not just the people that live on the lake. It's the people that live everywhere. Because that's an asset for this city, it's a prime asset. So that's how we'd have to do it. You have, you'd have to get the money somehow. Obviously, they're gonna look into grants, but you can also, you could create a management district for, for it to, to get a few dollars.
Thank you. There have been many instances when the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, or OSMC, has been vague or out of date posing enforceability issues. Considering that certain sections of the OSMC have remained untouched for over two decades and recognizing that the code constitutes a significant element of the council's duties, the question of modernizing and enhancing its legal coherence becomes essential. What would you do to, to get that going?
Well, I think that it ought to be the duty of our probably city administrator and perhaps a, an ad hoc committee that could rotate to systematically go through the codes and see if they need, see, code by code and see if they need updating or not and what it might mean that they do. I think one of the, I think a big snafu here happened this year about the signs, for instance. You know, always in the past, those signs, the political signs could not be placed in the city core. And that was, that was pretty firm. But this year somehow none of that changed and I think it led to an unfortunate incident. And I'm surprised it didn't lead to more. Because there are signs in the middle of, of the city that are not supposed to be there. It's not good, it's not a good look for the city. So I hope to answer it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, there have been many instances when the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, OSMC, has been vague or out of date posing enforceability issues. Considering that certain sections of the OSMC have remained untouched for over two decades and recognizing that the code constitutes a significant element of the council's duties, the question of modernizing and enhancing it for its legal coherence becomes essential. What would you do to facilitate that?
Okay, so most codes are following RCWs and similar, already written by the state or local governments. In most agencies or most governments, what they do, instead of rewriting a code, they write another code. And just that other one sits on the back burner. They clean it up by writing another code and enact that code. It's probably the shortest and simplest way of doing it for the city to do. If a code, a code is vague, write it where it's not vague anymore and make that your primary code that you're working off of. So you can do it just like states do it. So that's what I would do. If you're gonna spend months and months, maybe years going through the book to change something, you can change by rewriting it and voting it in.
Okay, thank you. Do you think it is okay for elected city officials to be going into businesses and making threats against businesses for, for political reasons? Why or why not?
I think we're supposed to be adults and if a sign being too high offended somebody, it, it, it's a sign. People don't have to look at them, they don't have to read them. It's a sign. I mean, honestly, it's a sign. I had mine, I had two stolen already. I have another one broken. It's a sign. Cost me money, so what? But it's just a sign. Being offended by it, I'm sorry. That business owner has a right to express themselves also. So they have that right. That's where I'll leave that part.
Thank you. Bob, do you think it is okay for elected city officials to be going into business, businesses and making threats against the business for political reasons? Why or why not?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with no comment.
Okay, thank you. I am concerned by what appears to be a lack of consistent enforcement of our traffic laws. I see speeders and runway drivers on Ocean Shores Boulevard regularly. What would you propose to do about it?
Increase signs each where you can, increase enforcement, speed laws enforcement by police. But then again, I think we only have two policemen on duty at one, at any one given time, so where are they gonna be? I think, I think an ideal spot, I mean, you could pick spots where people do almost all the time speed, coming out of the jetty, for instance, on Sunday afternoon, they could make a million dollars. If they're downtown before work, about seven o'clock, seven thirty, they could ride a lot of tickets there. But I think what people are talking about are people, are things like Dolphin Canal and that sort of thing, that people do a tendency to speed. And I think that it's all, again, and I believe this truly, that it's all about self-regulation. If I see a, if I see a speed limit, I know that that's what I'm supposed to do. If I go, if I go over that, I have to understand there's consequences. The consequences to me might be a ticket, the consequences to a kid on the street or an adult might be hitting them. Some people might be impaired. There's a lot of reasons for it and there are no good reasons. But I think, you know, how do we enforce? We educate with speeds, with signs and we enforce with police.
Thank you. Tom, I'm concerned by what appears to be a lack of consistent enforcement of our traffic laws. I see speeders and runway drivers on Ocean Shores Boulevard regularly. What would you propose to do about it?
I propose going to the chief in town as a city council and mayor and saying, hey, we have these problems, we have people complaining, we see it ourself. As you said, Dolphin, Chancellor Mayor, you name it, they speed. And some of the ones that are speeding does, do not care about the sign. So if the officers don't enforce it, you have two officers. That's fine. Two officers for this city apparently is okay by the city council and staffing. Hoakham has two officers, maybe a sergeant. We get out there and enforce. I have three of my officers that I work with that cited, but pulled over 200 cars in one month. You can do it if you wanna do it. And if we hold them responsible for it, we can get it done. It's pulling over people. Every one of us here sometimes don't look at the speed. If we get pulled over by a police officer for speeding, all we can say is, sorry officer, I wasn't paying attention. And if he cites us, he cites us. I've been cited four times since I moved up in this state. So I can't complain. It's doing the job. So we can, we can, we can make them do it. That's my answer there.
Thank you. Changing to a regional fire authority. The city council budgeted $50,000 in the current 2023-2024 biennium to study the feasibility of the changing from a city fire department to a regional fire authority. What are your views on this change and do you see it happening in the future?
I don't see it happening in the near future. It, one, it costs a little bit more, two, citizens have to vote for it. Aberdeen and Hoakham did try it, citizens voted it down. But they do have a very good working relationship between both agencies. They respond to each other's calls when the other one's busy. And I see something like that happening over there sooner or later. It's cost-effective for them. But here would be a little bit more, I think because we're rural a little bit, we're out of the way. It might take a little bit more to do something like that, but I'm not seeing that, do have any time soon.
Thank you. Bob, changing to a regional fire authority. The city council budgeted $50,000 in the current 2023-2024 biennium to study the feasibility of changing from a city fire department to a regional fire authority. What are your views on this change and do you see it happening in the future?
I think it depends on economics, whether we have, you know, whether we, whether we see it as beneficial financially. And then I think the citizens, I think, feel pretty good about our fire services at this point in time. And I don't, I, unless I miss my guess totally, I would think they would be totally against it.
Thank you. Thank you. What would you propose to help Ocean Shores grow economically? That would be for you.
Okay. Well, Pollyanna would be to try to get some light industry in here, but I don't think that's gonna happen anytime soon. I think if we improved our look of our city, that might help because you never know who's coming through, who comes down and who might say, hey, I'd like to open up something there. And we depend upon small businesses. And I think that maybe that if we did some things to make this place a little more attractive, make downtown more attractive, more walkable, I think that that would be a great thing. That's all I really have say on it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, what would you propose to help Ocean Shores grow economically?
I, I will agree with Bob on, on making it friendly for somebody to come in here and start businesses. Sidewalks, good roadways, parking, all those things that are necessary when you're doing those type of things. The size of business is depending on what we have in lots for them, places they can put their businesses. And that'd be part of the biggest issue that we would have in bringing certain size of businesses into the city. So that would be, have to, we'd have to look at as a city, what can we attempt to recruit this way? That would take some time, not much time, but some time.
Okay, thank you. What is a council manic bond or council matic bond? And if you, if, what if, would you approve the use of this method of finance and the highest dollar amount that you would allow for that?
Are you asking me? Hey, I thought he pulled it. Okay, all right. Hey, I've got the answer.
I, I read it to both of you.
Yeah, it's me.
I read it to both of you and I saw you.
Okay.
So the first time, the first time I heard about this type of bond was our last meeting we had here. It's for emergencies and I think you'd have to answer that question with what type of emergency and how much is needed in that emergency because we're funding ourself and we have to pay it back still as a city. So I think it's kind of a hard question to really answer because it depends on what we're using it for and why we have to do it. So that's gonna be the city, I think the city citizens probably should be involved in that too.
I, I have two answers. Because I saw a, the question at the Elks for the first time and I went, researched it. So a council matic bond is when you have, when you have a lot of overhead, the city has a lot of overhead. The city has a lot of overhead in long-term projects that are, interest rates are going up. And you still have your block down here of money that you have to pay the bills with, and you start taking money from these various accounts up here to bring it down here to help pay the bills. It's sort of like your checking account. If you have a house payment, you know, you've got to make your house payment, and then you go out and buy a car, then you buy a nicer car. And then the interest goes up, you know, and you have to refinance the house, and all of a sudden, you don't have the money maybe to pay the electric bill as much, as well as you should be, the water bill, that sort of thing like that. We did that, that's what got us into, not us, but the city into that situation in the early 2000s, that's what that, the interfund loan process was. They would take money out of accounts to help pay for the running of the city. Thus, the long-term projects got set aside. Now, the last people to actually use this, my research is, in 2009, Bainbridge had to do it, because they did exactly that. They had all these projects that were out there that they couldn't pay for, but they could not pay for them either. They would go belly up. So they had, it's a vote of the council, and it's a simply majority vote, and it gives the right to go borrow money, is what it does. So they can't put a bond on the citizens or anything. It'd seem pretty good if I made it up, wouldn't it?
Well, thank you for that.
I'm just kidding.
Okay.
In the meantime, win.
How do you justify and prioritize? Example, interest rates are climbing, we have the city water issues for constituents, the backflow regulators that will impact businesses and homeowners, hiring more, hiring more employees, the freshwaterway issues that will cost millions, the new police department, and you talk of sidewalks. How is this all gonna be paid for? I'm already broke.
What was the second one? Second, second choice there?
The second choice?
Yeah, the second thing.
It says that the city water issues from, for, the interest rates are climbing, we have the city water issues for some constituents, the backflow regulators that will impact businesses and homeowners, hiring more employees, the freshwaterways issues, that all will cost millions, the new police department, and you talk of sidewalks. How is this going to be paid for?
Well, I think the first thing is you gotta pay for, you have to pay for those, that water issue. I mean, no matter what you have to do, you've got to fix that. That's safety. The rest of these things are all things that could be planned for, put off a little bit, prioritize. They're all things that are worthy, obviously, and unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon whether you like it living here or not, if you're gonna live here, you're gonna have to pay taxes. That's just the way it is. I pay taxes just like you guys do, and I don't like it when my tax bill goes up. So, we have got to continue on our path of putting money away into the reserves, which we've done pretty well at. When I first came on, and we had $200,000, now we have over 2.00, $220,000, excuse me, now we have 2.4 million in reserve, and that's gonna, that's gonna build. We have got to maybe look at putting in more line items to put, put more money away, again, to build over time, and obviously grants, because we have a, we have a really good grant writer in our city, Sarah Bissin. And I don't know if you, maybe I'm telling you guys something you already know, but grants, you just, we can't just pick something here today, "Oh, we're gonna go get a grant tomorrow." It doesn't work that way. Grants are like a, sort of like a spinning wheel, and they come up every so often, they open, they open up for asking for. And that's why you have to be ready, if you're gonna ask for a specific type of grant, like for the waterways, it might not be available every year. So you gotta be ready. So you have to plan for this stuff. It's not something you wake up the next day and say, "We're gonna do this," because it doesn't quite work that way. So, in essence, we're gonna pay for it. The city's gonna pay for it. Taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Tom, how do you justify and prioritize? For example, interest rates are climbing, we have the city water issue for some constituents, the backflow regulators that will impact businesses and homeowners, hiring more employees, the freshwaterway issues that will cost millions, the new police department, and you talk of sidewalks. How is this paid for? I'm already broke.
I'm broke, too. I have to agree with Bob there, it's prioritizing. And, and it's not prioritizing strictly by the city council, it's hearing from the voices of the citizens. What's the most important thing that we can do at this time? Because we're, it's gonna take a lot of money to fix a lot of things we want fixed in the city. So we have to prioritize. That's why you want to elect people that understand prioritizing for the benefit of the majority, and what's the healthiest and safest things to do first. So we just need, we need to get that prioritized. We need a lot of things in the city. The city can only grow so much more, and we gotta have things fixed for that, so you people need to be out there helping us.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome. I give the last one.
No.
I win.
She did.
If elected, do you represent the taxpayer? What will your, what will be your guiding principle applied to your decision-making process when voting on how to best spend those tax dollars?
The people. That's who I'm gonna represent, and they're all taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer, so I want them to tell me what we need. I'll represent them.
Thank you. Bob, if elected, do you represent the taxpayers? What will your guiding principle be applied to your decision-making process when voting on how to best spend those tax dollars?
Okay, excuse me. I look at, I look at spending for the city the same way I worked in my job as a school psychologist, that everything's a pyramid. At the top of the pyramid in my job is always kids. What do you do to do the best thing for kids, to get, to make the adjustments, to get them moving along, to help them out, whether it be behaviorally, educationally, or whatever? With the city, it's the same thing. What's best for the city? Not for a group, not for me, not for any, anybody other than the city, and then you have to, you have to determine, you have to prioritize, just like the last question. You have to prioritize. And your citizenry will tell you how to prioritize, but we have a mission statement for the city council that tells us that we, we are responsible for that. We are responsible for that planning, and we are responsible fiduciary-wise to get these things done. So it's a pretty clear mandate that we keep the city always, no matter who it is, at the very top of the pyramid.
Thank you. So, we are at the end. We have five minutes for you each to convince these voters that you're the guy for the position. And Bob, you started, so Tom is going to finish first with, with his introduction or...
Introduction?
Introduction.
Introduction, reintroduction.
I began my life serving first my nation in the military, then my county as a deputy sheriff, my family as the breadwinner, and my department as a representative of that department, and the people that I work for and pay me my salary. I'm not doing this for any other reason than to serve my community at this point in my life. So, I will be available to you, yes, I will work still, but I will be available to you. And you'll have a phone number that you can get ahold of me at, you'll have email to get ahold of me at, and you can stop me on the street at the grocery store, or if you drive through Hoekwim and see me, you can stop me, as, as long as you stop me legally. And tell me your concerns, or what you'd like to see, because I'm here to serve you, not me. Thank you.
That was a quick five minutes. Thank you. Okay. Bob, you get to be next, and I'm trying to set this timer, and it's not wanting to do that.
It will be one, two, three.
You gotta time it.
It's okay, it'll be two or three minutes. First of all, I've got better hair.
You got hair. I shaved mine off.
Okay, all right, all right, maybe, all right, maybe I don't. I'll take that as a no. My whole, like Tom's, my whole career has been with serving. I spent some time in the military and the Navy back in the day. I had thirty, I had a 30-year coaching career along the way, too. Also being a school psychologist, I had 47 years of that, but I had 30 years of coaching at basketball and baseball, like at the college level, and at the high school level, and at the youth level. And so, I didn't do it for money, because you don't get paid a lot. I enjoy, my job is actually best described as being a problem solver, where when I work for schools with kids, a myriad of problems, ranging from what do you do to Johnny when he's lighting his sister on fire, to getting them into places where they're safe, help, helping them work through problems, social-emotional stuff. And that's all, that's all listening, as far as I'm concerned. It all starts with listening, which is something I, I always tried to do, is I want, before I usually speak at a council meeting, I would always listen to what everybody else had to say, because I had done the same research, I'd had the same paperwork to study that they had over the weekend, and I had time to ask questions to people who I knew, and I wanted to see if my thinking was with their thinking, and if there's something that I needed to rethink, or if I had convinced them to do something else. So it's a matter of being malleable, and a matter of, again, doing what's best for in the situation that you have. And so, I have always worked for people. And so, and this is an awful high-paying job, too. So, yeah, that's been my gig. I mean, that's what I do, and I, and I'll continue to do that, working for people. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank the audience again, and please give a round of applause for the two candidates. And afterwards, we'll have a meet and greet. I want to again thank North Beach TV, Dale Prowse, John Reed, Scott Johnston, I'm going around the room, Janet the Magic Timekeeper, and Rick Beveridge, and Jane for crowd control and setting up, and everyone that's participated in this. So appreciate your help. This is not an endorsement of any candidate. No endorsement of any candidate. It's your opportunity to get to, to know these two people running for this position, and to make a decision. And so I hope that you take the opportunity to meet with them afterwards. And again, thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.